Good evening. I'll call the or the to order the meeting of Nutria Township Board of Trustees at 7:31. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Here. You'll now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We are now in line for public comments. Are there any such comments? Anyone online? Seeing none? My understanding is that we will be tabling the approval of the meeting minutes to the next meeting. Is that correct, Nicole? So I'll, number four will be moved on to our next meeting, which if you recall, will be February 22nd. And just as a, and a reminder that that's a second meeting in February to close out our fiscal year and make sure our budget is set. Yes, it's my second. At 7:30 as well. Yes, thank you. Supervisors' report. It's been a relatively busy time since we last met. Obviously, you all saw that we can now do our FOIA and OMA trainings. Very exciting. I am proud to say that I was the one who broke the news to Troy. Gave me, it felt good. Um, so I have received some of those certificates of completion, but you have not received them. Let's make sure those are in by the end of the month. So that we can start our new fiscal year strong and compliant. So there is no actual revised deadline, but you know, a little. I'm going to go to Diane. Yeah. You'll get it. You'll get a certificate and then you can, you can print PDF and just sort it on. Yeah. Make sure that it is into the office. Right. Yep, perfect. But, good job. I represented the township at the Nutria Student Vaccination Event, which was very successful. And the Volunteer Centers MLK Service Project, which is one of our, our grant agencies. They did a great job moving to a kind of take-home service project event, which was a really unique way to make do during Omicron. So you picked up your service project, you brought it home, you gained your blanket, and you did your cards for veterans and for the hospitals. And then you brought them back the next week. It was great. So those blankets are not easy. We had a, we had a Township Officials of Cook County Supervisors Division meeting, January 20th. Thankfully via Zoom, which I participated. Where we presented a couple of legislative efforts that myself, Northfield and Niles are trying to encourage. So hopefully, as soon as we get a bill number, I'll share those with you. But essentially, it's to bring the Township Code into compliance with other parts of Illinois law. So that we can offer general assistance to those who had previous felony issues. Which is already the case for other portions. But there are also some other kind of cleanup items that we'd hope to, to see in the, in the Township Code as well. So keep an eye out for them. Obviously, we personally don't get to do anything on those. But do contact your legislators. And we met with Nicole, which to prepare for the annual meeting, I'll let her talk about the annual meeting in more detail. Other than the Community Spirit Award, which is one that goes, the applicants apply supervisor. We did update that application so that it's no longer from 2018. Or 13, we had both on the website. Yeah, we revised the summer camp applications as well, to make sure that those are ready, which are now available. I also participated in the North Suburban Legal Aid Strategic Planning Process. That was exciting. I think this was also the, the Board of Review event we did. It's been a busy, busy time. So that is the Supervisors' report. Madam Clerk? In the whole office and no one could get voicemail. So now we do have a recorded voicemail message that indicates the passports are currently closed. But if they want further information, they can leave a message to me or reach out to Larisha directly. So we're trying to improve customer service in that respect. But like I said, no date yet from when it's going to open. For the annual town meeting, it is set for Tuesday, April 12th. And we have reserved the Women's Club of Womack as our location. So that's on, I think, 3rd and 9th or so. There's mostly street parking, though there are a couple handicap spots reserved out front. Under the current orders COVID in Cook County. We will be required to take vaccination, make sure everyone that attends will be vaccinated. And of course, we'll also be checking to see if there are registered voters. So we'll be doing those things both at the same time. Now, because it is a public meeting and we want to make sure that it's available to everyone, there will be a hybrid office option. So if you are not vaccinated and cannot attend in that way, we'll make sure that we have an accommodation for you by providing that accommodation through Zoom. You know, we don't know by April 12th, Cook County's orders might change and we'll go with the flow for that for now. I'm working with Brian and Julie. Brian's identifying the candidates for awards and doing all of those logistics. And Julie and I have been working on our website, like Gail said, I think last listed the recipients in 2018 or something. So it hadn't been updated and we're really trying to track down some records of who has gotten awards over the years. And kind of pin down what those awards are going to be called. Some of them have been pretty consistent, some of them have not. We also want to make a better effort for a couple of the awards, reaching out to the community. Because they're allowed to nominate people for the George E. Moyes Award. And then the other award that we give, oh my gosh, Gail, I'm blanking. What's it called? The, the woman? Yes, that wasn't even published anywhere on our website that I could find. That would be wonderful. Yes, so um. As we prepare for the annual town meeting, we're working on doing all of those things. Okay. Perfect, thank you, Jan. And as I prepare for the budget going forward, just two things that are on the radar for the Clerk's Office. Trained on passports, it actually costs over $2,000 to get that certification and training. And Larisha does a fabulous job, but I do think as an organization, always great to have a backup person. It's really hard, I think, as an organization, where you don't have that backup person. So I think it's important to include that. Also, we would like to modernize a little bit here. Doing a little bit of research with other staff people, just trying to figure out how to get our records. Both the paper ones and electronic versions, just so we really have. We were so fortunate during the fire, right, that none of our old records got destroyed. And probably we can't get struck by lightning twice with a fire, right? Never know. We're just researching some options of that as well, reaching out to other townships, so. Yeah. That's my Clerk's report. We haven't decided that yet. We don't know if it makes more sense. You know, I do work full-time. So I'm only allowed to do my clerk job in the evenings. Now, offering an evening or weekend shift might actually be desirable to the community. So for now, we're just going to budget that money, but we haven't actually figured out the logistics of who that might be. Various townships have done it different ways. Have their deputies serve the all city deputy clerk. And have them train on passports, for instance. That's an option as well. I'm sorry, using my privilege to go back to my Supervisors' report. I forgot about legal win voters has participated in their Robert's Rules of Order program for junior high kids. So they got to use Robert's Rules of Order to order a pizza. Very successfully. Very inclusively, too. With the gluten-free crust with pepperoni on the side. So I appreciated that. So it was a lot of fun. And I forgot to also mention the internship application. So if you look in your, should have been, is it in Dispatch? Yeah, it was in the Dispatch. But if you take a look at that, you'll see that we are taking applicants for two internship positions for the summer. High schoolers, one to do mostly marketing and one to do mostly, yeah, records essentially. But they will also learn all the ins and outs of township governance. So if you know anybody, high schoolers who are interested in local government or media or, you know, marketing work. Or I'm sure many high schooler interested in education. Right? We're being flexible right now. Let me grab the application. So yes, certainly at the same time, if you know a high schooler, some of them that, they have to interview an elected official. And no one has ever taken me up on that offer. So I didn't like that, but, but we are not doing a peer jury scholarship this year. Because we did not have enough graduating seniors or any graduates. And we just started that. Yeah. We did send both to the peer jurors as well. So hopefully, we'll get some applicants on both of those. Anything else on that? I think that's it. Okay. Oh, and for Nicole, do check with Rome on what he digitized when he did historical records. Did he work with the historical societies? And I don't know what happened to those records. All right. Madam Assessor?
New forms, the forms for, the forms for 2021 exemptions will be available in early March. At least that's current word. The first, it was late February. Instead, it got bumped to early March. But he stuck with that for at least three weeks, so you know, promising. And his plan is, his plan is, and this is the good one, it's not going to work. He's going to send a postcard to everybody in the township, itemizing what exemptions they've already got. Nobody's supposed to have to renew an exemption if it's early happening place in order to save time, trouble, and everything else. What was the case last year, too? Unfortunately, the computer program did not function properly. And many people's exemptions did not have saved at all. So we still hadn't do it all. But we're, we're just, we're telling people that's what the assessor is saying. Call us in mid-March. If you haven't gotten your postcard and you'd like to know if you counted the exemptions at all on the record. And just, I'm taking nothing for granted anymore at this stage. And then the other, the other thing, I, I really think that the, the when, when the triennial, the new assessments come out, I think they're going to be paid. I think it's going to be awful. The sales, I mentioned last year that our, sort of our normal sales and sales, not the dollar volume, but the it took just a number of property sales is normally in the vicinity of 1,100, lesser minus, something like that. It's over 1,700. Which goes with all the news about what a strong year it was for sales. But that means the sense of high-end properties that were, were really driving that bus. It's going to make the averages look high. And I'm, I'm very concerned about what's going to happen to smaller, older homes, which do not really appreciate the values of that. But may get dragged out by it. And those are the people, those are the people that pay who if somebody who lives in a $2 million house and they screen blood and murder, that they're paying six, six-figure tax bills. But they afford, people who are in the house that they've been in for 40 years and they're on more or less a fixed income, they can't afford a different property. That doesn't work and it's not justified in those statistics. And again, I just, I don't know the, the assessor in 20, in 2019, he, in order to get enough properties to do a mass appraisal and these classification. Went into several different townships and he didn't have 100 properties doing Nutria, which for many of them is just not. We are not allowed to do that when we go with the comps. We have to stick with what we have. So the estimate may be huddled around it. And he got all of his numbers from someplace else. Which is one of those things, the Assessors Association prices coming up, there are a lot of things that's still kind of hard. First on the township, on the assessors, try and get information, accurate information for them when we don't have the accurate information given. So I really, I just, I real, I really think this is going to be a very difficult and sort of a thought. And not, not just here, not just township-wide. I think it's going to be, well, in the northern tribes, but that's the assessment. COVID reduction will go away. And that's going to be an automatic 79 or more percent bump for most people, right back to where they were. And then the main thing, if people start asking you about it, is remind them that they don't have to pay those taxes. So they'll still have plenty of time to feel as always. Ask. And don't forget to pay for your insurance. And the, also just attached, the paths on the, kind of to the report of the four, the paths.
Thank you, Madam Assessor. Financial report?
Final stretch for the fiscal year. This report represents 10 months of the, you know, the fiscal year through December. The statements are coming in now from the month of January. On the 22nd, we'll have that assessment of the final allocation allocated to Mr. Allen. Just briefly, the two-page report is a recap of both township and the general assistance. Noting for the ending period of this 1231 is the county fund is at 1,070,000. General assistance is a million, 57,000, 90,000. Noting there are no changes to the crease, any kind of draft things, just one. Accounts we have, the different activities that have all been handled. Same thing for the general assistance report. Was any questions on that? Moving on to the court changes.
Sure.
Yeah, and that's, it's a timing issue because on the graph in the period of time where it is dropping down, it's probably going to be. Expenses. The, it's an overall 85.6, 605, 6% of our revenues have been realized. Highlighting the 84%, which we didn't have a lot of news on December. Hopefully, those dollars will begin as we get to September. That's all based on how the county, the city's funds, those taxpayer dollars. So we will see that from the next couple, from the third, the next one. The, the budgeted documents for the programs, services, we're sitting at the two out of three. The other this month, I'll be processing the agency checks, which is final payment for all the agencies that will then realize the total of 1,000. Page two, women on Thailand, the summer camp scholarship, the usual ones that will be on the transfer. With the summer camp scholarship, we know we're just a little bit, so we're going to have to make a line item transfer there. Anything else? I'd noted looks fine on that page, but again, once the power is we usually budget within where we think was going to be and we are able to stay within that minimum percentage. Page three. Noting that the staff salaries, the math section, the fresh now is now received that annual transfer that I talked about last month. Those dollars come from the general assistance account. We transfer that as a final dollar in our fee. Will probably stay stable. You'll attend, you're going to have to be in attendance of the cost of last month. The staff salaries, because we got a new hire, but those dollars maybe. Total town fund expenses, the city has 55% of the April, but noting also that there's not large charges in the last year. Any questions on the town? Moving on to the general assistance. Just highlighting general assistance is at 82.61% on the revenue again. Looking at the property check. Administration, that's one or other. To have realized those dollars, but just talk about on the fire page. That's 100% that represents dollars which brought down, excuse me, it brought up the expenses for the and we will then probably not experience a lot of dollars. Highlighting the general assistance expenses are at 62.47%. Again, that's for that transfer. The overall is 85.17 for the revenue expenses. And that's the quick.
Does anybody have any questions on either town fund or general assistance fund? Yes, there would be a lot of checks to sign coming up. So given that, I'd like to amend our agenda to switch to, to go straight to acknowledgement of staff reports. Because some of the reports will be relevant to our further conversations. But I'd like to go ahead and acknowledge we receive reports from Community Services Administrator Brian Leverens. From Social Services Administrator Jean Rossar, Communications and Support Services Associate Julie Williams Berger. And I will note on Julie's report, I did forget to mention Winterfest. Winterfest for the Womack Seacast with annual will occur February 12th. So look at it, there should be a fire. So this Saturday, there's going to be ice curving and free cookies. And likely, my girls get true, so. And we are going to be handing out T95s and hand sanitizer and information. And lots of information since, I assume you, you all saw that we are, we now have the supply of T95s in the Cook County program. So perhaps grab a bag on your way out? Is anything else anybody wants to discuss from the three reports? That will not be covered on the agenda coming up? Okay, great. We have acknowledged those staff reports. And I would like to continue them to new business, the BMO Harris Authorization Resolution, since we just did our financials. Jan, if you wouldn't mind giving just an overview of why we're signing this, why we need a resolution?
Resolution is simply updating
Right. So essentially, you all should have a copy of the proposed resolution that BMO provided to us. So I'm just going to go and fill in dated as of February 8, 2022. We don't have anybody else authorized to sign?
No, stuff isn't authorized. I have. A little document.
Oh. Yes, we had to update our we did have to update our accounts significantly. We still had Hamilton Chang on there. Alan was still the supervisor.
But on the account, we have updated that and restocked the document.
Okay.
And that was with the board.
Yes. If you are interested in discussing that in, so we don't have Old Business, but Old Business can be on here. If you like to discuss the signatory issue, otherwise we, I will entertain it on a, on a future agenda. I, yeah. I appreciate that that's the conversation, but I just want to keep it, keep ourselves on the agenda. And if we want to address that particular change, we can do so in either a future agenda or an Old Business. Yes, when Larisha asks for a new, for additional agenda items before the meeting, feel free to put it on.
It would need to be part of another meeting. To be put on.
Right. Oh, are you saying that you would edit this resolution to add a second? Okay. All right, so, all right, so first of all, let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor and then we can go ahead and amend. Well, I need a second for discussion. Okay, we are now in line for discussion. Trustee Moser? Okay, so, um, I, I, that's a great point. And especially since what Clerk Capato was mentioning about making sure we have backups for all functions and that. So it's all in line with that same concept. I appreciate that. So it's all in line with that same concept, I appreciate that. Yeah, so, you know, right now, for instance, you know, we try to make sure all of our general assistance, well, so general assistance is separate because I have to do that. But yes, that, that could be a problem, we only cut the checks twice, twice a month, and what happens?
Yes, Justin's on that, and like I just mentioned, move that to, I, I prepare the document. Some have to be on all hairs, we have to send notes, to make sure they got that.
So theoretically, if I did something different, maybe I was just talking about Stefan's comment in the first step.
And Ellen should be on there because that's what we can have.
And that's fine, so long as by signing this one, we're not superseding that prior resolution or those cards or what have you. So, you know, we don't, we don't want to undo that by signing this.
Right.
But the, the language is a little tricky. So, you know, the, and, you know, on the first page of the resolutions, it does have people boxes for seven people.
Right.
So, you know, it's, it's. Yeah, and it would be nice to have everything signed on the same day so that all the signatures and signatures are in on the same day and.
That's, so, and just to read out section I. Be it, and it's hereby resolved by the governing body or body of the customer, duly organized and disciplined under the laws of state of. State of the state. That BMO RS statement is designated as an authorized depository of the customer, be it. Further resolved by the governing board or body of the customer that each of the following officials or officers of customer is designated as an authorized officer with each such authorized officer empowered to act individually, not dual signature fixing, on behalf of the customer to exercise such powers and authorities as you set forth in the resolution. And we go down. Be it, and it's hereby further resolved by the governing board or body of the customer that any authorized state officer is authorized and empowered in the name and on behalf of the customer to delegate to one or more of his or her deputies or authorized representatives. Any or all of the powers and authorities granted to the authorized officers herein, including but not only to signatory powers and authorities as any such authorized officer deemed necessary, desirable, appropriate. Including the authority to appoint or revoke the authority of any deputy. To be presumed by such authorized officer, including the MRS. Right, what? Right, so what if there is?
This is their form?
Yes.
We could ask them if they would entertain a rider, by which we, we write our rider. And essentially say, you're the signatory. You know, if you're incapacitated, then boom, boom, boom. And, you know, we could also then add in, if there is a check over X amount, whatever type is right, then it requires, you know, one of these other four people.
Right.
Um. They might have, you know, I can't imagine that we're coming up with something novel here. They, they might already have something to this fact. So it just might require a conversation with whoever we've got over at BMO to say, you know, in this situation, what have we done in the past? Or what have you?
What have others done in the past?
And then. I'm interested in, in what that number is, what that, what the check kind of limit is.
Right.
Um. You know, what have we seen in the past, what, what are the, what are the high numbers?
Right. Sure. Right.
I, I personally prefer the idea of a number as opposed to the words extraordinary, ordinary, because then we get into, yeah, what does that mean? And so, you know, I would, you know, much more comfortable in having a number that we just, you know, decide on. And it could be not, again, be tonight if we want to move on with this, but that's.
What I'm hearing is a well-founded desire for us to try to amend their form resolution in order to add a signatory that is authorized to act in the event of main incapacitation and also to set particular limits for single signatory authorized checks. So I appreciate both of that, and as a result, I would ask for a motion to enable this resolution to our February twenty-second meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Director, if you wouldn't mind being in contact with BMO, just see what they have done in those kinds of situations. Appreciate that. All right, similarly, given that we had just received the social services administrators' report, I'd like to discuss community support grants. You know what, never mind. I'd like, I'd like to amend the agenda to stop about the fiscal year twenty twenty-three agency allocations as Brian is here, and I'd like to let him go home. All right, so this is probably the crux of our meeting as well. All right, so if I could. So to, we have been provided with proposed allocations for our AGCs. Total in funding recommendations is one point five eight seven hundred, one million five hundred and eighty-six, seven hundred thousand. And we are, which is below the requested amount at one point seven million. And below are twenty twenty-two allocations as well. I'd like to open the floor to discussion.
I'd like to make a motion, at least trying to make a motion, to adopt the recommendations of our committee across the board with the exception of three specific agencies while falling under agency oversight. And those three separate agencies be carved out for separate discussion and vote. And those three agencies, I'm a little concerned about, I'm like, what you're high project, Weneka Youth Organization, and Warming House Youth Center. I think those should be separately discussed and voted on, but I'd be geared to move that the rest of the recommendations addressed aboard will be adopted.
Is there a second? Wait, first I need a second, then we can ask. Yes. Remember, I just did the whole class with the kid.
I did, I said, Blanco Junior High Project. I didn't say Blanco Youth Services, because that's not an issue. The three that I thought of, Blanco Junior High Project, Weneka Youth, Warming House. Those are the three I propose, we have separate discussions.
Okay, so it's Blanco Junior High, Weneka Youth, Warming House, not Blanco Youth Services.
Well, I said what we.
Yes, four and ship, the same amount that has been allocated. Okay. Is there any additional discussion on trustee Robbins's resol, um, motion to adopt the recommendation as presented by our advisory committee, other than Blanco Junior High Project, Weneka Youth Organization, and Warming House Youth Center? Being none of those questions? Um, seeing this has to do with money, I feel like we should do a roll call. Yeah.
Trustee Cassian McNally.
Yes.
Trustee Robbins.
Yes.
Trustee Moser. Trustee Rubin.
Yes. And, all right, so that is unanimous. So we have approved everything except for Blanco Junior High Project, Blanco Youth Service, sorry, Weneka Youth Organization, and Warming House Youth Center. All right, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the allocations for those three youth organizations. Is there such a motion? This is just to open discussion, guys.
I think we should talk a lot of stuff. I mean, I.
I don't have a motion on the floor. Okay, so that, is there a second? We may now open discussion on the youth organization.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned, Paul did a wonderful job presenting, Daniel, you've done a wonderful job monitoring. But I'm just, I'm thinking that, you know, these are some significant cuts. I, I want to defer to the hard work that the committee did, the hard work that Paul and you've done. But on the other hand, these cuts are significant, especially for Weneka, you know, Warming House, these are the kind of cuts that can impair services that are provided by arguably and agreeably struggling agents, and all these agencies are struggling. And the committee was disappointed in the numbers and in the progress and in the turnover, all for good reason. But when you've got somebody that's down and out, do you punish them? Or do you extend the hand and try to somehow help them through? And I'm just torn, I mean, my, my gut feeling is to defer to the hard work the committee put in and to support the committee. But I just want to hear what you folks have to say about it. And I certainly know that with the, with Weneka, Weneka, Warming House, what we provide, what the township provides is a significant portion of their, their funding. So, you know, these are the kind of cuts that if we, you know, vote in favor of them, we're, we're going to hear about it, and I'm not afraid of hearing about it. But, I mean, it is going to be impactful on these agencies and their abilities to operate when admittedly they're not doing a good job and their, their backs against the wall. So I really want to hear what you folks have to say about it, especially Danielle, because she's around here.
Yeah, I know, well, first of all, I also really appreciate all the hard work that the committee did and hours spent debating this issue. But Elliot, I too have the same concern that you have. I think this is going to be a hard decision. I don't want to pull the rug out from any of these organizations that have been here for such a long time. And I am concerned that by adding the funding so significantly that we might be doing that. I do appreciate and understand the committee's concern that the numbers have gone down quite a bit. And that you're not being, um, children engaged, you know, in these rec centers. And that this is not, and that this has been a trend. I think we also have to take into consideration, though, that this was during COVID. And everybody was having a difficult time during COVID, and this was a time when, um, you know, our community was told to, to stay apart from each other. And so really, the organizations had to scramble and figure out, okay, how can we still keep these kids coming together, you know, in a hybrid way, especially when they are on Zoom all day long? You know, how are we going to encourage them to then be on Zoom outside of school? So I don't think that it's any surprise that the numbers have gone down. And I, and I don't think that the organizations should be penalized because of COVID. By the same token, you know, I do want to be responsible with the taxpayers' money. And I want to make sure that we are, um, you know, funding agencies that are, are doing good work and that are providing a needed service. So. You know, I, I don't know that I know the answer. I don't think that I'm in agreement with the severe cuts, but I think some cuts need to be made. I just don't know what that number is, so I definitely, you know, appreciate any, any discussion. You know, I think they are very, very different agencies with issues. So I don't necessarily think we can use the same number for all three agencies. You know, as, as Stefan had mentioned at the last meeting, you know, Weneka Youth Organization, they have pretty grand, where other organizations don't. You know, I, I know there's also been discussion about some organizations maybe not being, um, maybe they won't qualify for funding in future years because of the new policies that we've created. And maybe this is a separate discussion, but I, I think part of what we need to take into consideration is what does it mean for youth organizations to serve everyone in the township? And my kind of opinion is, as long as the agency is open to serving everyone, I don't necessarily think that we should preclude them from funding because they attract more kids from Blanco than, you know, Will Metz. As long as they're open to all of it. And I, and I also think that services are provided in a different way. You know, I see how some, you know, how, how some of these organizations are using new students, you know, high school students to help with volunteer projects and things like that. So I, I. This is a tricky one. I don't have an exact number, and I'm really curious to what other people have to say. But once again, I do want to commend the really hard work of the committee. This is a tough one.
I would like to add, if we can have a motion to amend the resolution, the motion on the floor and discuss the Weneka Youth Organization and Warming House Youth Centers first, and then discuss Blanco Junior High Project. I do think there are separate issues that you have raised. Is there such a motion? Right now, I have, I don't have a motion on the floor, if you'd like to make that motion, that's fine. Is there such, is there a second? Okay, the, the motion's been amended, we are discussing about, about the Warming House Youth Center.
They, they certainly. Consequential. And, you know, pivoting, when you have a crisis, the ability to pivot on the, some agencies did great. And these agencies, for a number of reasons, didn't do that well. I, I think that, when I think about the Paul's presentation, he's excellent presentation. The agency oversight committee even wanted to put stipulations on some of these funds, that said, we'll give you this, but it's, and this, and this. And we all know that an agency knows when it's going to be getting at the beginning of the year, so they can stand accordingly. So, so then to me, it was, it was innovative, and it was some intention, but I don't think that's something that flies. I've never seen that in the history of how we conducted.
And, Brian, can you offer any kind of insight onto any more creative brand structures that we've done in the past? Right, if I could keep your. Right, if I could keep your conversation on Warming Houses right now? We only have one motion.
And the concern there is that, have the board approved the new funding priority plan, which states specifically that it cannot serve all the youth in the township? They are ineligible for funding. And right now, they've only served junior high kids from Glencoe. I am writing the letter right now to this organization. And in the letter, it will say, you're cutting your funding from twenty to ten because you only serve Glencoe. If you can demonstrate to us over the next year that you are serving substantial number of kids outside of Glencoe, then we will reconsider our funding. So that's, that's Glencoe Junior High project.
And Brian, to clarify, that's assuming that the agency allocations are approved today. Your, the, the letters that you have, that you have been preparing are assuming that we, that we approve the allocations as consent.
They were only having, you know, forty-five kids a month when they were doing personal services. I'm going to get a report for them shortly to see what the numbers are. So far this year, they're not much better, my understanding. You know, they haven't, they haven't cut this half, so it doesn't make sense if it's going to be more money if they were feeding.
All right, question, question. What impact, if you could kind of switch your position a little bit, what impact would that, you believe, that kind of stuff would have on the Warming House, kind of that from sixty to thirty-eight? Do you have a sense of what impact that would have on the township or the competitive?
Well, they may have to reduce the hours somewhat. And they probably will have to. I don't think it's going to impact services that much.
Somebody's studying the math and not another.
Well, they may down some of the, I don't think it's. The numbers that could do, you know, some of them.
So using potentially overhead costs with regard to salaries is a place that includes any other structural.
What they may do is reduce the hours of work for ten years.
I guess same question with regard to, I know we're trying to talk in one at a time, but as long as we're on that subject, is it permissible to ask, I mean, what do you think Weneka, yo, what effect that proposed cuts would have on their?
Well, again, I think they'll have to reduce their hours from fifteen to five. And the one thing I am sympathetic with is that they have to pay ten thousand dollars a year. And that's, that's a huge. Nothing, Warming House and Warming House Youth Center, they don't, they take down the years of service. But the yo, you know, was close for six months. Which they pay, they still have to pay the rent. They didn't have to pay any salaries. They got their full funding.
Did they take PPP at all?
Pardon?
Did they take PPP, a PPP along? What's that? I'm sorry, did they take the government assistance during, during the pandemic?
Yes, they, they got, they got some grants, yes.
You were mentioning the, well, that Warming House is in a park district building. That's right by the police station. Right, I know where it is. I didn't, I had, I knew like intellectually that they, it was a park district building, but I hadn't really put together that it's owned by the park district. And I'm not seeing anywhere in the application that they received any funding from the park district.
Was that discussed in, are there any possibility of a dispute, for sure? It was discussed, I mean, it was. Was that discussed with them at all when they presented? Was that discussed with them when they presented with the? That's what I'm going to discuss with you.
Yes, yes, yes.
No.
My immediate reaction was, we're going to put the case back. After, I appreciate the sharing, but you put, I mean, half of those lights. I think that that could be a definite for one or two of these agents. I also thought that the, you know, well, it was arbitrary. Because what came out of discussion was that the Glencoe, this organization, operating on thirty thousand, everybody else. Arbitrary discussion because for openers, factor of rent, or Warming House, it's them out of that organization. So those are my initial reaction, but I very much share your thoughts. And then I don't know what magic number is, but when I heard the numbers, my reaction was, wow, I open up.
All right, it's, it's not arbitrary. I'm thinking the committee helped to keep that, it functions very well, thirty thousand dollars a year. That's more kids visiting there than the other two centers. And they manage this fire, and the other two agencies, it's quite certainly fewer kids ask for more money. But does it, Glencoe has much more involved parent body? I believe that they have big company. They're a smaller group to start in, in terms of population.
They have a care of the audience, it's impressive.
Right, so, I think Glencoe is a big entity in this department. And the other thing is just talking about everything one. I'm concerned about having a bigger project like that. It's that, it's I've been okay for them to only take care of junior high kids from Glencoe. And all of a sudden, you're putting line in the sand, so not acceptable anymore, funding by half. And I just think that that's an inconsistent provision. I'm done talking, you got my question.
I'm sorry, why is that an inconsistent?
Because for years, for years, they've only ever served Glencoe to kids. And they funded them for years, at least made on this document, twenty thousand dollars. All of a sudden, this year, we're going to say, well, you're not funding the township, and therefore funding by half. Now, you're arguing it could be the fact that you require, require the funding and that's the basis for it. But it seems to me that it's a little, it doesn't. I know, it's, it's very specific, I get rid of the youth program altogether, making it one program. The youth center, the problem to the township committee for at least sixteen years, I've been through. But it's absolutely not new, but the idea of saying, this should be funded by half. And I know they're, I know they got. But I don't know if that, why, it doesn't apply for, it might be somebody else.
Yes, it absolutely doesn't mine. You know, I certainly have, have felt as a trustee that I didn't want to be funding any organizations that were only serving one community. Now that we've clarified those positions, we did send out the, the guidelines, the standards that we're going to be going into effect as mandatory standards to all of the agencies during this round, saying this is what's going into, into effect. And during this period, obviously, they're simply guidelines, they're not mandatory. But we are, you know, I see this as a way to offboard them or to get them to remember that they don't meet our standards.
Someone, you can't, you can't divide the baby in half. You can't say, well, okay, you're not serving all the students, you're not funding them. But our criteria says if you're not funding a year, you can't fund them. So I agree with you at that level. If that's your condition, and the response I would give, you don't get anyone.
I think we have, the funding requirements don't kick in until.
Right.
Just funding, funding cycle. So this is the way, this is the way as a fairly.
Right. Elliot was just saying that he doesn't want people to be shocked, and that's what that was meant to do, right? So, you know, yeah.
If I have a question as to how we as trustees are going to interpret this new policy because the township funded program must serve all youth in your township. I don't see anything that says Glencoe Junior High Township or Glencoe Youth Services will not allow someone from Womet or Weneka to come and join them. Just because the kids maybe choose not to, that doesn't mean that they can't.
Well, they can't.
And, and I think this is a reason to have a rec center in each community of our, our township. And I think it makes sense that Glencoe is going to attract Glencoe kids and will not, the Warming House will attract Weneka kids, and not, that makes sense to me. And there have been some, I know you'd like to see more, but there has been some collaboration among the services. And there are, like I said, there are volunteer projects that involve all of the townships. You know, there has, there has been book buddies where nutrients or high school kids have been working with other, I need to find other people to group. But, you know, I think, I, I think as trustees, we need to figure out the definition of, you know, how we're going to interpret this policy.
I wanted to touch on a couple of things you mentioned there. And I could keep our premise, keep us clear that for Glencoe Junior High Project is the only one that we were, that we were having in order because of the healthy going into effect next year. Glencoe, Glencoe Youth Services, Weneka Youth Organization, Warming House, as a, as a group, have been considered to be open to all of nutrients. It's Glencoe Junior High Project that is in the junior high and often during the day. And so you cannot go to it.
That has been their policy since forever now. In the letter, it's going to say, if you can show or offer your services to other, to the rest of the youth that's serving kids outside of Glencoe, then you can better funding you. And now pre-high school youth centers have always been open to all high school kids. Yes, GYS is primary Glencoe kids, but they do start a lot of kids from Weneka and Womet. Same with Weneka Youth Organization and same with the Warming House. They're open to all high school kids.
So I thought that the Glencoe, they have book buddies. And that wrapped the entire school year and added new days and had the cheer kids out to the facility. So they weren't taking kids from the high school. They could have been from Womet, Weneka.
Relatively used in other. If it's a one-time thing.
What is practical matters, Ryan? They're not going to change the price in this year, the next year. There are people, I, that's a very. Kids from the junior high, you must, are not going to go in part of the.
Exactly.
So my question is, you cut them in half this year, make sure they get nothing?
Yes, assuming that they continue to act. That is a dimmer switch. It's a dimmer switch. Yes, it's a dimmer switch. We're saying, you know, you need to, you need to, you know, be available to everybody or else the lights go off from us, not from anywhere else. It's a matter of who is supposed to be funding these organizations. No, that is, that is what previous boards had decided. Our, our, the guideline, the, the criteria that we have agreed to and will be going into effect for next session, for the next funding cycle, does not. Is not. No. No, we, we specifically made it for the next funding cycle, that those criteria go into effect because people had already submitted their. Yeah. And that's for next, the next committee, the committee advisory committee. Because we already had applications then, that was the issue. Yeah. Exactly.
This is, this is like our property taxes. We pay for them long after the year in which they've been. So it's, I, I, I don't, I don't personally see the disconnect. I, I, I am curious and want to get back to the numbers. You know, I'm, I am particularly sensitive to the fact that one of these three organizations needs rent and the others are not. But at the same time, I am very appreciative of the long ti, you know, efforts and hours that our committees have spent. And, you know, in the same way that I wear masks because doctors tell us that that works, I'm looking to, you know, the people who have spent the time poring over the documents and interviewing the people that are close to these numbers. And I am interested in following that advice. I am also interested in the concept that change does not occur when people are comfortable. And that if these organizations are not seeing the numbers of kids that they may need, the prod of, you know, you, you need, you need to, you know, we're not going to fund you in the same way and at the same levels if you're not getting more than five kids in the door virtually or in person a month. Like, that's, that's, to me, not serving the best interests and it's not being fiscally responsible with our taxpayers' money. And, you know, for, I, I, I think that if you want to be funded at a higher level in a township, you need to be serving more than five kids a month. It's, it's, I, I, you need to innovate, you need to figure it out, you need to go back to the drawing board. And, and, you know, I think that that seems to be part of what the committees were, the committee was responding to in, in looking at these numbers and in making, making the proposals that they made. And, you know, for me, I am interested in, you know, voting to approve those numbers in honoring the committee's work and in hopefully, you know, gently pushing these organizations to innovate and move towards the future.
Absolutely. And the more gentle, at question, the more gentle cause had been through Brian's consistent letters and the committee's consistent work with all those organizations over the years. We've kind of had kid gloves. And now we, we saw how dramatically, you know, they're being overfunded by us. I mean, Weneka, Warming House is asking for ten thousand dollars per kid for what Danielle called rec centers. And that brings us to next, to another point is, again, you know, I, I guess, like I thought, Junior, Junior High Project should likely be funded by, by the Glencoe schools. I also feel that many of these youth organizations should be funded at least equally private district's, if not more so, or entirely.
Kind of going back and forth between organizations, but for example, the Warming House. They admitted that they took very young children during COVID. They also said they did so avoid by offering some mental health services to some of these kids when other agencies were at capacity and couldn't handle them. So I really appreciate that. Since there, there has been some improvement from the summer. Um, since there, there has been some improvement, um, from the summer. Um, they, I have a number thirty-five teams or sixty-five. Um, you know, there was also the issue, they said the pre-COVID teams have graduated. So they needed to kind of, you know, reinvent the wheel and try and get new kids in. I just, I have, I have mixed feelings because I, I do understand that the trend was declining. Um, but again, then COVID hit and we're still very much in it. And I, I don't, I, I mean, I, I agree that there needs to be accountability and there needs to be a decrease. Um, I just don't know.
Everybody, I mean, this is a must in a light on this company that are yes enough to pivot and innovate under very difficult circumstances. It's kind of hard sometimes to innovate when you don't have the funding to implement change. Um, if, if, if they're going to try to figure out how to make ends meet here, the last thing they're probably going to be successful is implementing significant, you know, change. I'm assuming that they'll get the other half of their funding. If they get half their funding from us, that's assuming they get the other half of their funding on schedule. They get 100% of the other half of the funding they're hoping for. Then the effect of our change with regard to global youth services and that being, you know, if we cut each one of these agencies by a third or close to half, the net effect is that these agencies, they have about 20 to 25% less than their budgets. So their budget's not going to be cutting down. I'm assuming they'll get the other half of their budget from the other funders. But by us cutting our half, by, in the case of, um, Winnetka, almost half, in the case of, um, Warming House by a third, it does have a net effect of a 20, you know, 15, 25% overall decreasing.
Winnetka itself, you can cut out an all of them. And you're cutting them, you're cutting Warming House.
And I think you could probably cut me 10,000 more. It's more against it.
That's, that's kind of.
And I think that, you know, I, I admire what these committee members have done, the work that they've done. But I also have to defer to Trustee Ruben, who is in there in the trenches with them. She had attended the meetings and, you know, she is the liaison from that, the trustee liaison from that of the Uberside Committee to us. So, I mean, I think what you have to say, Danielle, carries an awful lot of weight in terms of the decision.
Of course. They were not mandatory during this funding cycle. No, I'm not saying it doesn't apply, I'm saying that it is persuasive authority rather than mandatory. Yes. No, well, here's the deal. We have had these, these have all been unwritten essentially guidelines or some were written, some weren't, some were used in some committees, some weren't. And the point of having them written down and ratified was to avoid this confusion. And that's why it's becoming mandatory. Yes. No, then we would have cut it to zero if it was mandatory this year. Like you said. Now, we cannot judge. Yes, Brian? It was already, it was already a valid consideration for the board. It was not, it's not a, it was never off the table. We just put it in writing and I don't think we should be, you know, giving it less credence as a result. Of course. So, um, is there any new discussion? Being none, I'll call to question on the amended motion, which on the floor is the Warming House's allocation at 38,000 per the advisory committee's recommendation. No, no, I, I had amended my, the previous mo, they amended the previous motion.
When they amended it, they said that they were just going to open the discussion for the lineup, not just like, actually.
It was officially for the amendment. Yes, yes. I apologize. This is the most complicated party pro what they may do. Okay, so the question is whether the Warming House allocation should be 38,000. Um, all those, the, the money, let's go ahead and do a roll call. Yes. Yes.
No.
Trustee. Moser. Trustee Rubin. No.
The motion fails. There's no motion on the floor.
I, I would possibly make a modifying motion.
Well, now there's no motion, so go ahead and make a new motion.
My motion is based on the fact that we hit 52,000, 57,000, 57,000. The last three, there's probably an unprecedented health crisis that they're going to have to respond to better than they here. I could live with giving them 47,000, 10,000 less than the last two years. Well, I would move that we give them 47,000, 10,000 dollars less than they, if we speak for us to use. Uh, it's 40, uh, 47,000 would be 13,000 less than.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Discussion on the, um, on the motion to, uh, to allocate the 47?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven thousand dollars to Warming House Youth Center. Any discussion? My only note I want to say is, yes, there's a, you know, unprecedented public health crisis, but there was last year as well. We gave them, every, we gave, we pretty much didn't take away anybody's money because of that in recognition and this year, in two years.
So are we going to be in the same situation next year?
Well, but they, this doesn't apply. Right, this doesn't apply. The, the, though the mandatory guidelines do say take into account the number of people served, right? And the number of people served were ten. Um, and that's why I believe, and they're paying no rap, right? And they have received harsh language in the past.
I know, but this thing is, this crisis has turned on like nobody.
I know. I know. I definitely thought it was the last three weeks, so I feel you. So, uh, any additional, any additional discussion on the 47,000 allocation to Warming House? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. No.
Trustee Cassel McCallie.
No.
Trustee Robbins.
Yes.
Trustee Moser.
Yeah.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes. Motion carries 47,000 allocated to Warming House. Okay.
I had a really difficult time with trying to, to impose requirements as the year goes along. How do you plan, as, if you're running an agency, how do you plan accordingly? Do you like, the funding sources, do you come out and you tally, like you have? The funding source is uncertain. They have to jump through each twenty years and we have to visit whether they're jumping through those groups. I think it's a very difficult organization that was suggested. It was innovative, I understand where they're coming from, but I don't think it's practical either from the agency's standpoint or from our standpoint.
Um, the, the motion that passed would not link any metrics. But we can discuss what non-binding metrics we can discuss, we can talk about. All right. I know. Winnetka Youth Organization, I'm now entertaining a motion to, um, to approve the $38,000 allocation to Winnetka Youth Organization. Is there such a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion?
If we, yeah, if we move Warming House, we've got to move them too. They're paying $10,000 and it's just, it's ludicrous to not do that with them too. So, so, um, I, I would move that, uh, the, uh, allocate 47,000 dollars to Winnetka Youth Organization as well.
Second.
So we, we, is that an amendment to the?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I, I would move to amend the motion.
No, you got it.
Um, of the allocation to Winnetka Youth Organization from 38,000 to 47,000.
Um, all those in favor, this is just to amend the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Um, any opposed? Okay. Any discussion on 47,000 dollar allocation for Winnetka Youth Organization?
By way of discussion, I would only point out that that's $8,000 less than they received from us for the last three years. Yeah, I, I would be the first to admit there's some arbitrage as to what we're doing here. We're trying to find some little ground that won't put you in such a crisis, such a deep hole.
I mean, it, it's disappointing to me because I don't, I don't feel that our role as a board is to act on behalf of the organizations, but instead on behalf of the taxpayers. Um. That's true, absolutely.
With the balance then.
Absolutely.
Only to have the balance, you know, protecting the taxpayers' valuable tax money and allocating that money appropriately with following through the mission to protect and advocate for the most vulnerable members.
Old timey. But quite well taken.
Yes.
Um.
I, I, what you're saying, otherwise if our mission is just to protect the taxpayers, then why?
And they, they presented so poorly that if you really elevate protecting the taxpayers, you put funding. That's how poorly they presented.
And hopefully they will see the amended numbers and say, we're not seeing the numbers. We've got to figure out how to get kids in the door or online. We've got to talk to these kids and figure out what they need, why they're not showing up, how we can get them, how they're going to bring their friends, so that we don't go down more.
Yes, and that's why the letter that accompanies the check has to be so important. That is really imparting on the difficulty we had to protect, yeah, it's very, very thin ice. You have two years to pivot unsuccessfully, now, you know.
And it just brings me to the, I think it is, I'm going back to the one. We say, we, we basically, it's a, it's, we found middle ground because they're decreasing the requests. They tend to.
The 2022 allocation, right?
And yes, we are giving more than what the committee had recommended, but the committee had recommended the same amount.
I will know that they recommended the same amount, um, to serve.
You know, I think it may not, it may be a little arbitrary, but we're doing it arbitrarily. But they had a nexus and they said, look, let's look, let's put Glencoe on Youth Services as, as a model. And if they can do it for this price, I mean, that's not totally arbitrary, it's logical. I understand where they're coming from, but this is such a difficult thing that we're trying.
So the current motion is on 47,000 dollar allocation to Winnetka Youth Organization. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call, call the roll.
Supervisor Senator Rosenberg.
No.
Trustee Cassel McCallie.
Yes.
Trustee Robbins.
Yes.
Trustee Moser.
Yeah.
Trustee Rubin.
Yeah. The motion carries. Finally, looking at Glencoe Junior High Project, I'm, would entertain a motion to approve the $10,000 advisory committee recommendation. Is there such a motion? Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Particular and new discussion? Assume that we all remember what we've said a few minutes ago. Seeing none. Please call the roll. Of course. Yes.
Uh, Trustee Cassel McCallie.
Yes.
Trustee Robbins.
Yes.
Trustee Moser.
No.
Trustee Rubin.
No.
And a vote of three to two, the motion carries. Yes. Um. Yeah. And we have no other funding recs, but we do have one other thing in. The metrics have already been recapped. These will not be readjusted. Oh, you're talking about the youth services metrics, not the criteria, okay. Um, they were not a part of the motion. Would you like to add particular metrics to them?
Well, I want to make sure we have a test in that. I want to make sure that we're not moving metrics on these.
But it's all at one time and then it's coming all.
The, the motion did not contain any.
Yeah, the motion didn't have any extra language on it. It was just for allocation language, so I think.
Yes, the thing, but that's good to clarify. Don't look at anything. Everybody, close your eyes. I know. Ryan. We know, we know our sprinklers work well. We know our sprinklers. And they probably have fresh waters. Oh, wow, we're just going to call. All right. We wanted to congratulate Brian on his 25th agency allocations process. It's 25 more. But in seriousness, we really appreciate your institutional knowledge and really just ability to know about the agencies in our community, who they serve and with, with caring and with really sophistication. So we appreciate it. Thank you. Is it your birthday too? Are you 25? Puzzle time. 25, you look great. Oh, congrats. All right. Well, add that to Good and Welfare, okay? All right. Thank you, Brian. Enjoy your treats and you're allowed to leave. But you may stay. We will turn to community support grants. And I do apologize that I am amending the agenda on the slide. But I just like to do things logically in my head. So you received the report from Jean. That there have been over 220 community support grant applicants, I believe there have been more since this report, but they have been less than the 235 from last week, is that correct?
I know.
Right. So I, they're due, they're done. We have, yes, we're just making sure that we have all of them, because if you recall, we found an extra application last year that had been sent by the dates, but had not been considered, and therefore we had to do a separate allocation, that's why the support grants go small allocation. Right? Good night, thank you, Brian. On, so I would like to entertain a motion to approve the $1,200 payments to each eligible applicant in line with last year's community support grants, is there such a motion? Any second? Any discussion? We can bounce it back up again. Yes, there has been a lot of changes in the, in the number, it had gone down to, what was the lowest then? Yeah. We actually increased our budget line item for community support grants in order to up it back up, because it was under 1,000 at that time. Right, so I'm just looking, it looks like we've got 286 left, if I'm correct, okay.
1,000?
Yes.
If divided by 220, that's 1,300.
Right, but I do believe we are over that number at this point. We are allowed to do a line item, transcribed attempt, it's not the line item. So we'll, we'd have to lock it in, yeah. It does not appear that in the current budget, we can move up to 1,500. Yes. If we had 235, you know, we could offer $1,217. We do believe that it's between the 220 and the 235 of eligible applicants. Any other discussion, the current motion is for the, is to be in line with last year's, which was an increase, significant increase. Seeing no additional discussion, do you mind calling the roll? Yes.
Trustee Cassel McCallie.
Yes.
Trustee Robbins.
Yes.
Trustee Moser. Trustee Rubin.
Yeah. Thank you, the motion carries. 1,200. And we can address that line item in our next meeting on the, when we finalize the budget for next year, Trustee Moser. If we do anticipate wanting to increase that, which I think might be in line, then we should do that during the budget process. Okay. All right. We'll now turn to fiscal year 2023 salaries. I have not received a proposed salary allocation.
We have.
Is there a motion regarding the fiscal year 2023 salaries? Yes, we have. Yeah.
Well, we did the one for the.
1.9. Yeah, I think it was 1.2, 2.1.
We also did some data, honestly.
We did.
I'm kind of impressed with you with that.
It was a dollar minimum. What was our bonus this year? It was a 1,500? The 1,500 bonus is the current motion on the floor. Is there a second to offer second COVID bonus to the staff in the amount of 1,500? Any dis-, any discussion?
You're correct?
Yes.
He was, yeah.
Right.
I would just, yeah, the cause of this unprecedented crisis, the complexity, that I see these kind of things happening elsewhere in the private and public sector, we need to incent family work hours, or it's, we're cutting it out during Herculean, during very difficult times. We are in a unique position when we have a little bit of money and we're able to do it, and I think that was.
Good point. Yep. All right. Any additional discussion? Madam Clerk? Yes.
Trustee Robbins.
Yes.
The motion carries a bonus in the amount of 1,500 for each of our non-officer staffs. Regarding salaries, we had started discussion, but I would like a motion, Trustee Moser, were you getting at an increase in accordance with CPI? Is that your motion? True.
I've been hearing from different groups, that 3% needs to be adjusted, there is a change, also, but, I mean, or, particularly else, and, and out there, and, so, you're not, so, I think it's, it would be somewhat, I think it's, uh, um.
Is there a second? Any discussion on a 3% across the board salary increase?
Right, yeah, but we have, we have a little bit of a lag in our percentages over the last four, five years.
We stopped with the, the, yeah.
Which, and I don't know if you have to say your favorite, it was, it's been running around, one and a half, two, which.
It was higher.
It was higher.
I think it went to, it went to 2.5, 2.5 was the highest.
So we've been up in that 2.5%. 3% based on your reputational aspect would be unprecedented, excessive, right?
I think it's within point, I was like.
True. If we look at our current total salaries, I believe we're at, we're 16. Double check that with the budget summary. Okay, so I took that number off of the website on our salaries list. Yeah, so, so the, the public documents that we've put out to the public says that we have 416,000 in staff's salaries currently, so if we did a 3% increase, that would bring us to 428,717 in aggregate.
One more question. So you had the combination of the second bonus, you know, that 3% in terms of morale of staff, do you think that would be, based on your sense of what's going on, you think those would be appreciated? Absolutely, well accepted. Thank you. Thank you. I don't completely agree with you, but, yeah, and, are we willing to consider merit either this year or the?
In my discussions, it would be appreciated to consider merit, rather than across the board increases, not linked to merit going forward. Right. We, this township just tradition, had, had done performance reviews years ago, it is in our manual to do so, I do not believe they've been done in many years. So I do intend to do something, but I'm not sure how formal it will be. But yes, I generally agree that, I think that it helps those who feel they have gone above and beyond to be recognized for having done so. Yeah. There is a motion on the floor for across-the-board 3% raise. And what's the effectiveness?
What's the effect of date?
What's the effectiveness?
So like, this is one of the.
So then we take this 428, the aggregate number, well, wherever it's, we'll go with it. Great, that makes sense, okay, so just so we can. Got it. Okay. Any additional conversation?
I may claim to support this, tie with the bonus, with the strong hope that we take in the next 12 months to figure out how to move this organization in the direction of other organizations that look at merit as a component of future increases, and, and bonuses for staff members.
Absolutely. Want to be in charge of that?
I would be happy to help.
Fabulous. Appreciate it. All right. And if everyone would, merit being, or increase, I'm sure we would all support that as well. All right, any additional discussion on a 3% across the board increase for salaries for the next fiscal year? Seeing none, please call the roll. That is a number. I even put it in my spreadsheet, we learned how to do it. Yes.
Trustee Cassel McCallie.
Yes.
Trustee Robbins.
Yes.
Trustee Moser.
Trustee Rubin. Yes. All right. We're now in line for the approval of claims. Trustee Moser? Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Yes. Any discussion? I'd just like to, to note that, you know, this reflects the savings that Julie brought to our communications program, and thank you for your hard work, getting multiple bids, and really making sure that the career looked fabulous. I've only received good feedback from it, so. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Yes.
Trustee Cassel McCallie.
Yes.
Trustee Robbins.
Yes.
Trustee Moser.
Yes.
For our motion to adjourn, good and welfare, Trustee Moser's birthday tomorrow. Any additional good and welfare? Happy birthday, and many more. We're now in line for a motion to adjourn, is there such a motion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Good night, everyone.